And now I'll call the March 16th, 2020 Emergency Meeting of the Riverton City Council at the 6:00 PM. Would Councilmember Schatz lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation will be given by Councilwoman Borders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for everything that you've given us. We pray that you give us guidance in what we need to do here and over the responsibility that we have. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
I declare a quorum as present. I'd like to welcome everybody that's in the audience. We appreciate your attendance. We're here for just one purpose, and that is to discuss the virus that's going around. And we'll turn the time over to the city administrator for his report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, with the recent COVID-19 pandemic declaration, as well as information from the federal government, CDC, public health, and other guiding agencies, we've seen a number of different closures within our community. You have a listing of some of those as of earlier today, and I know there have been others. Most of our schools are closed. Fremont 25 is closed for three weeks. Lander has provided a restriction on access to their facilities. If you will, it's hard to call it a closure because they're still operating the same way we are. And so what that drove us to is a long conversation about what needs to happen or what probably should happen with the guidance that we've been provided. As such, today, after some consultation with both staff and the mayor and I have spoken, we did close down City Hall to general access. And as I say that, we continue to do business. What that means is that we have begun providing service through the phone more, through appointment if absolutely necessary, and also employing our digital technology that we've implemented over the last year. This is, in effect, a method or an approach for social distancing. It's one of the phrases that we've been using a lot lately in order to attempt to reduce the spread of the virus and reduce potential infections. Why is this important? As we look at the services that we provide as a community, water, wastewater, law enforcement, we are trying to limit that exposure as we try to see what is really going to happen. We know that we cannot shut down services. It's never our intention to do. We do want to protect our people and protect the public as much as we can. And as such, we've taken the steps that are provided for you. First being that, as of now, the city office would be temporarily closed to the public for general access. The date we have tentatively on that is April 6th. Now, that could change. It could be sooner, and ultimately, we could come back to you and say it needs to be later. The second is that business will continue via phone, email, and other digital means as available. We have those in place, and we've been providing those via Facebook. We provide those via our website, and we direct individuals to those. Staff will be working and is going to continue to be flexible with folks as we try to continue to provide the service we've been providing. We're going to find other ways to do things when we absolutely have to. Certain services will be available on an appointment basis, and this will be at the discretion of the departments and will depend upon the nature of the appointments, some yes, some no. An overarching policy on that matter doesn't really help us a lot because it doesn't allow the differences in the departments to actually be realized. With direction from the Riverton Police Department, the Riverton Police Department will temporarily cease nonessential services. We've seen this a little bit in Lander as well. Items like VIN inspections, notary services, limited reporting on minor accidents, items like that. That is, in effect, in trying to make sure that we're allocating our time appropriately and reducing potential spread, again, reducing that interaction. Nonessential board meetings would be canceled or conducted from distance via phone or video conferencing means. It doesn't mean we have to stop. Obviously, City Council is still open. We have public meeting laws that we have to, and we have to be able to work with you so you can provide guidance, we can provide information, and we can do the best together as we try to address the issues that are facing us right now. And ultimately, you have another meeting tomorrow evening as well. This meeting was largely, as the mayor pointed out, to have the discussion about the steps we are taking. Ultimately, if council would like us to do something else, or they see additional means or lesser approaches, we can do those things. We felt that we needed to act, and we felt it appropriate to act at that time. With that, we have a number of resources in the room right now that can provide information for you, provide guidance, provide anything you need. Great group of people. So with that, I would end my report and be happy to answer questions at your leisure. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mike Hutchinson is with us. And Mike, you address us with your information that you've got this afternoon.
Guys, I'm just going to bring these pieces over to my back.
Thank you.
Martin's drive up window is open, 856 there.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Your Honor, councilmembers. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Mike Hutchinson. I'm the Fremont County Under Sheriff. Basically, just the information that I want to provide you with, the Fremont County Commission met earlier today in a similar meeting to what you guys are having right now and made the decision to stand up an incident command team as a means to help support public health officials in the coming days and weeks. That incident command structure is in no way trying to take anything over or take anyone's power or authority away. It is simply a means to support public health in their mission to keep the community safe. Kim Lee has been appointed as the incident commander for this support system. It's basically a task force at this time. There's been some information that's been disseminated to officials and stakeholders. It should be in your email, as we discussed earlier. So more information will be forthcoming, but the county is taking steps to do what we can to assist public health in whatever means they need. Is there any questions about that?
Could you list those members of that group so we know those are going to be the sheriff and the county commissioners, mayors?
Yes, so this was at the direction of the Fremont County Emergency Council. The Fremont County Emergency Council consists of the county commissioners, mayors of all the municipalities within Fremont County, public health officials, tribal public health officials, and emergency management coordinators, the Fremont County Emergency Management Coordinator, the county clerk, the county sheriff. I hope I haven't missed anybody, but that's the membership of the emergency council. And then the incident management team is a small group right now. I've been appointed as the Public Information Officer for that group. Like I said, Kim Lee will be the incident commander. The Fremont County Emergency Management Coordinator, Kathy Metzler, is handling several duties within that task force, and that will probably grow in the coming days. So as more people are plugged into the incident command structure, that unit will grow.
Any questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
We also have a representative from the county health. Would you like to address us?
I guess I came to the wrong meeting. I was supposed to be here tomorrow. I'm Brian G. I'm the county health officer, and I've been in that position for the last couple of years. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have right now.
You have the lead on decisions that we make, and we're going to run those through the county emergency team. So we'll be taking that information from you. So do you have any updates that you'd like us to know?
Yeah, currently, just as you're probably all well aware, there was a patient diagnosed with COVID-19 in Showboat Residence late last week. Because of that, the state public health epidemiology group came up all weekend, so we were all there trying to interview residents and staff there. They found a number of people there that had symptoms. They also felt that because of the clinical situation of the patient that's currently in the hospital, that it was likely based on community spread, so somebody had brought the virus into the facility, and there wasn't an actual point person that we could say was a connection to travel or one of these other high-risk things. Because of that, that sort of increased the concern that, you know, the virus has been in the community unclear how long. And so I think that was the point that we had left it. We don't currently have any testing results. We should hear more either late tonight or tomorrow on testing of the individuals that reside there, as well as some of the staff. Based on symptoms, Dr. Harris and I, she's the state health doc, are suspicious that there will be more positives from that facility. And as you might know, there's been some testing. It's been limited. Unfortunately, that's been a frustration for healthcare across the country. It's been frustrating for people in the communities as well that we aren't able to do anything other than talk about these really good public health mechanisms, you know, the non-pharmaceutical interventions and the social distancing, which we've been trying to talk about for the last couple of weeks prior to this diagnosis or diagnosed case. So currently, we are awaiting some results, and then that's going to probably determine some other, you know, sort of actions, depending on if the patients are stable enough to be, you know, watched there. You know, often 80% of the people or so will have mild illness, and that's one of the things that people have, you know, been frustrated with this. Is this all going to be mild or not? It definitely affects our older population a lot more significantly, it looks like, especially if they have medical conditions. And that's sort of the concern with this. So under the guidance of, you know, CMS in the government, they've requested nursing home facilities to really lock down as of the middle of last week because of the spread. They've also asked assisted living care centers to kind of change and to try to take on those restrictions as well. I guess they are under different auspices and controls as far as nursing home versus long-term care centers. So that's currently how it is right now. There's probably going to be more information, we think, later tonight, tomorrow with regards to the testing results, and then I think we'll make some other decisions based on that. If the patients are stable, they'll probably be watched there. The Wyoming Department of Health issued quarantine on all the residents and the staff that were there, so they're currently under quarantine for at least 14 days. That's been the standard quarantine. There have been no other positives in the communities thus far. There, I don't know how many we've done in the community per se. I think it's been in the neighborhood of, you know, 20 to 25. Dr. Harris and Governor Gordon had a press conference earlier, and I think she said they'd done 40-some tests or something in the state. We've done quite a few around here. And when she left, she said the Lander, Riverton, Fremont County area was going to be a priority from the Department of Health lab, so.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming. He referenced a meeting that we're going to have tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon from 3:30 to where we get done with that, and that's by invitation. And it's a brainstorming idea of how to work with the information we've got and what to do with it. This is a public meeting, and so in many of our meetings, we have an opportunity for the public to speak. We don't in this one. But tomorrow night, if anybody wants to come and speak from the audience, we will have an opportunity for you to do that if you choose to. There is, and that is in the very start of the meeting, somewhere around 10:00, 7:10 or thereabouts, we would be taking those comments. So I do appreciate your attendance. The real reason for this meeting is that I wanted to make sure that the city council themselves was brought up to speed with all the things that were happening and where we are. The county commission called a meeting Saturday, and that meeting was held down at the county facilities at the fairground. Most of the mayors were there, I believe so. I don't think DuBois was there.
DuBois.
DuBois. John was there, yeah. So, but he was there. I was in by phone, and so it was a good conversation. It was about a two-hour conversation. Prior to that, so you know what the city's been doing, is we've had conversations starting as early as last Thursday on what to do. The recommendations that Tony has given us are basically for City Hall and city employees. The new, it was referenced earlier also, that President Trump sent out a memo this afternoon from his news conference at 2:00 this afternoon on today's date, and that's a guideline for what they would hope people would do. Now, when we mention social distancing, that's probably the most important thing that we can do. And, you know, that's to try to avoid contact and after we extend our field span between us so that we're not right on top of each other, give people space so that they have their room. Once again, the most, the group, the social group that's most affected by this disease is those over 60. And so if you have friends, family, grandmas, grandpas, you might want to make a special effort to get them to where they can stay in and stay isolated until we know more about the virus that's upon us. The other memo that came through is we have a new store opening tomorrow that was going to have a grand opening. Gorman's has come to town. They were going to have a grand opening tomorrow morning at 9:00. They've canceled that grand opening and are going to go ahead and donate $1,000 to the school district, which it's nice to see Terry here tonight, and you're $1,000 richer as of tomorrow. And I counted, there is 44 stores opening tomorrow of their stores across the nation from Arkansas, Kansas, Oklahoma, Oregon, Texas. And so they're going to be $44,000 out of their pocket tomorrow for those high schools and to show their support for the community. So I wanted to push that forward, too.
Your Honor?
Yes.
But they're still going to open tomorrow, just not have the ribbon cutting.
That's right.
They're still going to be open.
They're still going to be doing business. They just didn't want to call a public gathering to spread any viruses. Now, as we go through the president's mandate, he instructs people to follow state and local authorities, which that would be our emergency management group that we have. If you have some suggestions, it would be wonderful if you get those suggestions to the mayors, city administrators. Those people are welcome in those rooms, and we can carry those to where they need to be. These are common sense problems, and so what we really want to do is encourage people to be vigilant and not scared. You know, this is a virus like many that we have, and we need to learn to deal with it and take the right precautions so that we don't have a massive hospitalization of individuals. So most of us, I think, have been dealing with this pretty heavy in conversations for the last week or so, and we wanted to make sure that the city council was up to speed and had all those recommendations in your hands. So when people called and ask you any questions, there's eight different suggestions that the White House put out this afternoon. So with that, is there any discussion that the council wants to have?
Mayor, if I could. So a couple of things I wanted to mention. Smith's is going to be opening early for elders. People are kind of going crazy over the toilet paper ordeal and stuff. So I just want to let everybody know that Smith's is opening early for elders. There is also, if you go to YO today, they have a volunteer, or you can search for somebody who is a volunteer, and they will either get that stuff, bring it to you, take you there to get it if you need. It got real crazy, real fast out there, so I just want to encourage everybody to check on your neighbors, make sure everybody's got what they need, and make sure they're taken care of. Those are the real big things. I think what we're doing, there's a lot of back and forth, and everybody's become a professional overnight on everything. This is, the best way I can explain it, it's best, you don't wait until there's a fire to build the fire truck. So I think, I want to applaud the City Hall for taking these precautions. It's more of a precautionary step, so that way we are, I would rather overreact now than underreact, find out that we underreacted later. So I just want to say, I appreciate what you guys are doing. I want to make sure everybody knows that there is opportunity for the elders to get to Smith's, go to YO today. There's also a small group. I believe the mayor's been in touch with them, but they're looking to go around the neighborhoods and offer some kind of assistance if it comes to that point where we need to communicate with every neighbor. That is all that I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Mike?
Again, I think we're making the right moves here. I think we need to all be cautious. I'm sure most of you, like I have, have been getting overwhelmed with lots of emails on what the CDC says and all the precautions that we should be taking. And again, they're common sense kind of precautions, you know. This idea that we have to buy up all the toilet paper in town, again, is counterproductive to what we really need to be doing, okay? We need to be cautious. No reason not to maybe stock up a little, but it just causes hysteria when people go out and just buy everything that's on the shelf, and then the systems get overloaded trying to refill those things. You know, and the pipeline, you know, if there's X amount of toilet paper sold in Riverton on an average week, okay? But if all of a sudden that gets quadrupled, well, then the warehouse that normally supplies them toilet paper runs out, and it takes them a little while to get their stock back up because they're only used to selling that much toilet paper per week. And so we sort of create this self-fulfilling prophecy that these things are going to happen. And so we just have to be careful and be smart, and there's not, you know, we need to follow the rules that they've given us, which are all common sense things, you know, wash your hands, don't cough on people, you know, keep your distance, you know. All of those things make sense. They're true with the flu, they're true with this virus that we're fighting now. And so we just have to be vigilant and pay attention to what we're doing, and we will get through this thing, and we don't need to get all excited, and the world's not going to come to an end, okay? We just need to use some common sense, pay attention. We'll all get through this together. You know, we saw this when Y2K was supposed to happen, you know? And in my field, everybody came, and they had five-gallon buckets and 55-gallon drums, and they bought all kinds of gasoline. And my gasoline sales went up like triple a week before the first of the year. So guess what? Took the three months between then and three months later, I didn't sell any more gas because guess what? The world didn't come to an end. Everybody just spent the next two or three months using their five-gallon buckets and their 55-gallon drums they'd filled up with gas, and everything was just fine, okay? And so those things just cause unneeded, you know, hysteria from people, and we don't do anybody any good, okay? And it can be true with any item because, you know, if everybody flushes their toilet all at the same time, the water pressure's going to go down, right? That doesn't mean we're running out of water. So I guess that's my only comment. I think we're going to get through this thing just fine, and we just need to be careful and pay attention to what the professionals are telling us, and we will be fine.
Jim?
I guess the first thing I would note, if somebody is concerned that they have symptoms that match with coronavirus, what would you recommend they do at that point?
So the current recommendation would be to call your provider and kind of talk to them about it. Most people, as you've said, will have mild illness. So if you have fever, cough, you know, upper respiratory type stuff, there's still flu going around. It's starting to wane a little bit, but that's still probably as common as anything else. So we have to throw that in the mix, and RSV and all other respiratory illnesses. First thing we're recommending is call. Hunker down if you want. I mean, you know, if you have a fever over 100.4, they suggest, you know, staying at home and kind of see how the symptoms progress. But call your provider. Again, the testing unfortunately is limited, and so often you're going to get, oh, you know, based on your history, based on your age and potential risk factors, they'll say, hey, why don't you stay home? We're probably not going to test you. Obviously, if your symptoms got worse or you got more shorter breath, then we'd want you to, you know, present and try to call ahead. A lot of the clinics are trying to figure out ways to, you know, have sick upper respiratory people and like ankle sprains and finger lacerations, and I think the hospital's trying to do the same thing. It's unclear how much, if we're going to get more testing soon or not, but testing is being done at a couple of clinics here, I think both hospitals and a couple of tribal clinics as well, so.
I think it's important to note, if anybody's wanting to sit there and push the city to somehow shut down bars, restaurants, that kind of thing, we don't. And this was reiterated by the governor today. We do not have the authority to do that. And his recommendation right now is just exactly what has been said. Be smart. Don't be going out to these places and just having a ton of people there where you're going to be creating issues. Be aware of where you're at, be aware of how many people are where you're at. This is the very first thing that they're saying here. This is the very first thing that they're saying here is, well, and I don't even know if it's in the list, but it was part of what President Trump said today, try not to be somewhere where there's more than 10 people. Now, we have public meeting laws, so we can't sit there right now and kick everybody out. You're, you're welcome here, and you should be here, but I guess just anywhere you're going, be aware of how many people are there, be aware of what's going on. We don't need to sit there and have people pointing fingers at each other if somebody coughs. Like he said, we've got flu, we've got colds, we've got allergies, so we don't need to sit, have this turn into kind of an us versus them thing, where we're trying to say, hey, you've, you're making everybody sick, but we do need to be aware. And I think these are pretty common sense things, that I think make a lot of sense right now. There's countries right now that are, I think, having problems because people are stubborn and just want to do whatever they want to do. I, I think in France, for example, they're getting frustrated because they've got all these guidelines, and the folks in France are like, you don't get to tell me what to do. Well, then the virus spreads and it gets worse. So, these things, the governor has full confidence that people are going to be smart, and he made that very clear today, and so I hope that we can prove him right in Riverton, and we can make sure that we're listening to him, we're doing the things that we're being told to do. But I guess the biggest thing I wanted to stress is, just because you have a little bit of a cough, or something like that, don't just automatically think you have coronavirus, but it may not be a bad idea to stay home anyway.
Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention, touch on something that Tim said. I think we all need to remember that we're all here together, we're all in this together, and if you see someone buying extra toilet paper, maybe they've got a reason, they could be buying it for other family members, or something like that. So, I'd like to see everybody kind of hold their judgment and be kind, and let's get through this together.
Good suggestion. Anyone else? Now, this meeting really is for the use of the city council, so that they know where, where the target is at, and, and they can come and, and get involved with that. The items on this list from the president's office are listen to your local and state authorities, so I think we have that fairly well covered. The emergency team is going to stand up and run that out of the, the county. And so we get that down to where people understand the, the directions that we'll take, that the ultimate authority in Fremont County is the sheriff. And so the sheriff will take care of law enforcement items, and, and what we really want to do in the city of Riverton, and we've talked about that extensively, is we want to make sure that our officers are well taken care of. That's why we're not sending them out on a bunch of small items, they aren't, they're not, that they're not important, it's just that we're not going to do van checks on vehicles, we're not going to do dog calls at large, notary services we're not going to take care of, fingerprinting we're going to hold off on. We'll be back to these when we have, when we have other time. We also, in Lander, we sent in two ambulance crews to pick up people, and, and we lost those ambulance crews to quarantine. They're all fine, there's nothing wrong with them, but by protocol, we got to put them out of service while they, while we check them out, to make sure that they don't, they're not carriers. So, once again, it goes back to if you're feeling sick, stay at home, don't go to work, contact your medical provider. The medical providers are putting up a lot of temporary, the clinic here in Riverton put two tents out in their parking lot, and they're taking temperatures of, of individuals. I know that some of the food service organizations, the restaurants are actually taking temperatures off of the drivers that are delivering food in the community. So there's lots of things that are being provided to, to help you stay safe. If your children are sick, keep them at home, don't send them out, to contact others, and provide, and, and contact your, your medical provider. If somebody in the household does test positive, keep the whole household home. Don't send any, don't send them individuals out, keep everybody at home. Don't go to work, don't go to school. Once again, contact your medical provider. If you're older person, stay at home. So what I would suggest, and what I did today, was I called a few elderly people in Fremont County that I know, and made sure that they knew if they needed assistance to, to call me, and I would get them help to, to go out, get groceries, whatever they needed. So we have some organizations, like Councilman Rota alluded to, that would help us with that, so I think that's a really good suggestion, so, so it's a wonderful idea, just like Councilman Borders, try being kind for three weeks, and go out of your way and help somebody else with, with what they might need. So, we're good at that, and we understand that. Now, if you have serious health conditions, that's another place where you could, you could be at risk. And so for those of us in our community that have lung problems and, and other conditions, they should, they should be very cautious of what they do and where they go. One thing that we're doing as a city, and we've been doing this since early last week, is we're paying great attention to our water providers and our sewer and sanitation. We want to make sure that our people are healthy and well, that our officers are protected, because there's just lots of times that you don't even think of those things when you go in and, and do that work, and, and they do have the protective gear to put on, so don't, don't think that they're not coming if you need them, they, they will come. I know the sheriff's department is in the same boat, they have the same protection, and, and so they, they will be coming. School is, most of the schools across the country have let out, and that's going to cause problems with kids that are, you know, at home. And so people that have two kids at home and need daycare providers, be careful where you send your kids. Maybe not a good idea to send them home to grandmother, to ten, especially if she's elderly. So, give that, give that some thought, and make sure you're, you're paying attention to that. There are some, the other thing that we don't understand about this, and you don't think about that, but we don't, we don't want people to go broke because of this scare. And we want, we want the businesses in town to stay healthy and working, and we don't want to compromise those if we can. You know, you're going to have to use your own caution there, but we do want those to, to stay viable. This one, it's under seven, and item C, it's to avoid social gatherings in groups more than 10. Now, that's new as of this afternoon, and that drops that group rather low. And so, Tim's right, don't be worrying about anybody else's group, but if you can control yours, try to, try to control the groups that you find yourself in. It also goes on to say, avoid eating in bars and restaurants, food courts, use drive-through and pickup and delivery options, avoid discretionary travel, shopping trips and social visits, practice good hygiene, wash your hands, especially after touching frequently used surfaces. At city hall, and the places that the city controls, we have our janitorial staff taking care of that. The airport is under extra care, so are all of the city buildings, we would appreciate everybody else doing that also. Other than that, they're just, they're just really practical things that you can do. What I would like to make sure is that we don't spread panic, and that's, that's an uncontrollable situation when we get in a panic mode. There is no need to overbuy. Toilet paper is made domestically, 96% of our toilet paper is made in the United States. There is a supply of toilet paper, and it will be replenished, and there'll be more at the, at the stores. There's a real good study out there from the, a London university that has pointed out over and over, in a epidemic situation, one of the first things that goes missing is toilet paper. And, because everybody, it's inexpensive, and there, and there's plenty of it, and so we think we better get some that's still there. I would encourage you, as you go to the stores, to be cooperative, and to think of other people, get what you need, and, and use that, and, and I don't want you to go without, but remember that there's other people in the community that need to do that shopping. If anybody wants a copy of these latest eight, I think Megan might have a few left over from what the council does. Do you have a lot, or not?
I can get some.
Okay. If, Kyle?
Just one second. All that Rich, uh, mayor's gone over is on a website manned by Google, so it's already up, and it's coronavirus.gov. All of the information you want, you can look, you can go through that, you don't have to call a health provider, you just go online, and if you've got a question, it's there. We're here to help, and as Mike has said, he would love to sell all the gasoline-soaked toilet paper he had, but there's no need to. So, thank you.
I don't think there's any real other issues. Now, we may need, we, do you, would you like a motion to approve the steps that the city's taken? Tony?
Your Honor, that could provide some clarity if there's anything else that we need to do. I would point out that, just quickly, that the understanding is that we will, there may come a time we need to make some decisions, we will attempt to bring those back to you, but some of those may need to be made in shorter time periods. Of course, staff works with the mayor, and, in trying to make the best decision for everybody as that was come through, and we're trying to be as flexible as we can right now with our service provision. Everybody here wants to provide good service, and we appreciate everyone's patience, and we appreciate your pa, your patience with us, and we'll do the same. Thank you very much. So a, a motion probably would be clear, Your Honor.
The chair would entertain a motion, and I would suggest that it contain the items that are on the memo from the city, 1 through 9, and the discussion of 1 through 4, if there's a councilman that would present that.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilwoman Borders, and a second from Councilman Hancock. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, just I guess to clarify, we're talking about 1 through 6 in the discussion portion here, the nonessential, yeah. The 1 through 9, that was the other places that have been closed.
Perfect.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now, before we leave, there is, there is that meeting tomorrow afternoon, and, and those are invited people to that meeting, because we're trying to keep the numbers down. It's just a discussion of things that we can do that would help. If we, if we get some good ideas, we'll get those to, to the media as soon as we can, and, and get those out there where we can get that good information spread around. The governor, just so you know, the governor's office had a webinar that we sat through from 4:30 to 5:30 today. Tim, sounds like you heard it, also. The president had his today at 2 o'clock, that's the one that, that Kyle has, has informed you, you can get on your phone, on your computer, and it's, that coronavirus, it's www.coronavirus.gov, and that will give you all the information that we have. So, please, be careful in the dissemination of information that you send out there, we don't want to cause panic or discord, we want to help people, and, and that's the purpose of this meeting. If you have further questions, you're welcome to stay and ask those. Kyle?
I just want you to, we do not, we are not shutting any businesses down.
No.
We do not have that authority. We are not suggesting, we are just saying, use common sense.
It has been shot around town a little bit by social media that we, we might shut restaurants and bars and those kind of things, and somebody has authority to do that, but it's not me, and it's not this council at this point. There may come a point when we have that, and we do choose to do something of that nature, but that's not even a consideration, that, and that, that's why I would counsel you to get good information, that is from the right sources, and not hearsay, that is out there to, to try to scare and motivate people to do things that aren't a good idea. We're in good shape in Fremont County, we only have three cases in the entire state that are confirmed, two in Sheridan, one in Lander. And so with that said, be positive and, and go out there and, and do your very best, okay? With nothing else to discuss, is there an objection to adjourn? Seeing none, the chair adjourns us at 6:41.